Ready down there gentlemen? Ready down there? Okay. That office pause. The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. This evening Drew Svenson, pastor of First Christian Church will lead us in our invocation.
Will you bow with me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we look to you, the giver of all good things. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy here in this country. Thank you for your blessings upon our state. Thank you God for every good thing because we recognize it comes from you. Tonight we come before you on behalf of our local officials, for our city council members, for God, our local state government. We pray for your blessing upon them. We pray that you give them wisdom that they would lead us in a way that's honorable to you. We pray for our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, nurses, doctors, those who serve our community. May your blessing be upon them and thank you for them who give so much to us, bless their families. And God for the meeting tonight. May it bring glory to you and we thank you and give you praise in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
We are honored to have with us this evening three students from the First Christian Church Youth Group, Evan Doni, Kelly Svenson, and Alex Piazza, who are going to lead us in our pledge. Lady and gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
This evening we have some, well, we'll wait until... This evening we have some very special presentations to make. One of our most successful programs that we've had on Main Street is the facade grant program where buildings are taken back to their original facade. We were trying to determine how many we've done on Main Street and within the historic district. And we've only been able to verify that we've done more than 60 in the last five years. So tonight we are going to recognize 10 that were done during the last year, which has made a tremendous difference in the appearance of our historic Main Street. So as I, I'm going to come down and as I call your name, if you'll come up, I'll be thrilled to present you with your plaque. Amy's not here, right? The first one we have this, this evening is for Amy Jordan of Bella Fontana Spa. I think if you look at 430 West Chestnut, you will see that a tremendous change has taken place in that building and really brightened that spot. So we appreciate Amy and all the work that, that she did and we'll make sure that she gets this. If you can, the pictures are small, but you can see the tremendous difference that was made in, in that building. Bob Landon. Bob?
Thank you.
Bob is, has Landon's Winery at 316 West Main and in fact, I believe it received the award for the best facade change of the year.
Did it really?
Didn't it?
Well, let's say so.
It's for next year. Oh, it's for next year. Oh.
I'll act surprised.
Bob, we appreciate you so much and we, we, you know, if you, if you haven't paid attention to the change in that building, it's strictly, it's simply amazing. So Bob, thank you, thank you for choosing our community and we appreciate you very much.
We love it. You know, the audience up now too.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
I don't believe that Don Day, is, is Don gonna be here or is somebody gonna accept this for Don? Okay, well, we'll, this will come as no surprise to anyone. Don Day with DFA Limited, 34 Chop House, 331 West Main. I mean, the transformation has been unbelievable and has created such a buzz on our Main Street. So I'm sorry Don isn't here, but we certainly appreciate that he chose our community. And always our, our facade changes are not just on Main Street, they end up being in our historic district. And if you watch the progress, the First Christian Church at 800 West, well, is it called Main?
No, it's Woodard.
That's Woodard. Right? Well, on here we have 800 West Main, so we really do need to fix that after we, after we make the presentation. I think this is being accepted by our own council member Spiegel.
Yes ma'am.
If you, if you watch the, the progress on the church, the change has just, just been amazing and we're so appreciative of the beauty that, that you created on 800 West Woodard, not 800 West Main. So please give our congratulations to everyone at the church.
I will. There's a lot of people working hard on that and unfortunately, I don't think they understood the memo while they were here tonight, the youth group and the pastors. So I tried to text them as they were all standing out front, like, y'all come back in here.
Well, I thought that's why they were all here.
That was the setup. That's right. That's okay, but I will, I'll pass this along. And in fact, I, I'll just leave this, how about this? I'll leave this here so we can get that.
Okay.
Thank y'all very much.
The next one goes to Josh Massey, the South Burnett Investments. It's 112 through 120 South Burnett. You know, this has been a, a, a couple of year process and, and of course, the, the change is, is just phenomenal. It is, it is such a point of pride for our community. So Josh, thank you so much. Thank you for not only this, but all of the reasons that you chose our community. Maddie Quaid? Well, Maddie has the Dance Explosion at 401 West Main and I'm not sure that this one isn't one of the, the best ones. I mean, the, the end result, you know, the facade had been completely covered in the who knows when, 60s, I guess. And of course, the, the change is just phenomenal. It's just, so, so we are, we're sorry that Maddie couldn't be with us, but we do appreciate all the work that's been done to, to change the, the whole demeanor, if you can use that word, referring to a building. It is just, it has such a presence now. Proprietary Holdings LLC, 602, 604, 606, South Armstrong Avenue. Jonathan and Jason Earnhardt. Well, I'm sorry they're not here because they have certainly made a difference in what we call the sugar bottom. So it's, it's amazing what, what these buildings look like now. So our appreciation goes out to Jonathan and Jason for all that they've done. I only had marked on here that there was one person that didn't confirm. Obviously that is not true. Amanda Mosher? Amanda has, takes on a cash register at 131 West Woodard. And if you haven't been by there to see the tremendous change that's taken place in that, that building. Egyptian blue is not my favorite color, as many of you on historic preservation know, but it happens to look really good on this building. So Amanda, thank you so much for choosing to improve your facade. And Tommy Shields and Don Nobler of Los Hermanos at 405 West Main Street. I, neither of them could be with us tonight, but the change in this building is very subtle, but certainly makes a difference in, there were three in a row that were done in the 400 block and it really, really made a difference. So we thank them also for their commitment to our Main Street. And I guess, George, we save the, the best for last. George? Wayne Shoe Repair and Foodery, 407 West Main. If you haven't been by there to look at this building, not only did we take it back to the original building, but the sign that's on there matches the original sign that was on Wayne's Shoes. And it's 90, how many years, George, that it's been in business?
Oh, 1902. But under Wayne's name is 1940. We don't know what was the name before. It was William Couch, Wayne's brother before.
So we're not sure, but it may be the longest running business in Main, on Main Street. So we are so, we are so thrilled to, that you have done these things, George. You know, you took advantage of the program and you, and you recreated Wayne Shoe Repair.
Thank you.
So if you haven't been by there, be sure that you go by and look at it. And I particularly enjoyed the original sign that, that's on there. So George, we appreciate you.
Thank you. I'm so proud to be part of it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's give them all another round of applause. Thank you, Phil Fontana.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we just talked about how you brightened that spot, so there you go.
You want to take a photo?
Yes, I do want to take a photo. Thank you. At this time in every meeting, we set aside time that any citizen may speak on behalf of any action item on the agenda. Ms. Valentine, do we have any request to speak cards?
No ma'am.
There being no request to speak cards, there will be no public comments. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with items eight, uh, four A through four F. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make up recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 1,006 acres legally described as situated in the JD Sutherland Abstract Number 1150 Grayson County, Texas, GCAD Property ID 109761, also known as 2030 Texoma Drive, from the Commercial District C to the Light Industrial LI District, case number 2022116Z. Ms. York.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Actually, we'll be taking action on that ordinance and I'm sorry that that is not what the slide said. This is 2030 Texoma Drive. It is located kind of at the corner of Texoma Drive and Juanita Drive with Reese Foods just to the west. The property is currently zoned commercial and the applicant is requesting the rezone to light industrial in order to accommodate warehouse uses. The applicant has already submitted a minor plat to city staff and it's been approved, has not been filed yet, but it will be as soon as we can get that filed for them. They have submitted a preliminary site plan and I think that was part of y'all's packet. However, they have not formally submitted a site plan, just pending the rezone. Staff will review that. It can be staff approved and will require landscaping and all of those kinds of things that we like to see. However, before any of that can happen, we have to rezone it. So applicant is wishing for that and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting held on February 28th. Staff recommends approval and it does comply with the comp plan. And I'm present for any questions you may have. I don't know if the applicant is here, so I'll try and answer as much as I can.
Questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
Mayor, just one note. I think when we were reading the original agenda item, it was noted as 1,006 acres, but it's really 1.006 acres.
Oh, it is 1.006 acres. I, that's, I was giving it longer.
I kept double checking it, the...
Okay. Let the record reflect that it is 1.006 acres, not 1,006 acres. Any further discussion from the council? A motion.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval of the change of the zoning from the subject property from commercial zoning district to the light industrial zoning district. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on amending the Dennison Development Alliance Fiscal Year 2023 budget to add line items for property sales income, foundation business park planning and engineering, infrastructure, and sewer line installation and infrastructure, industrial access street. Ms. Osseball.
Good evening. The DDA Board of Directors met and approved their fiscal year 23 budget on August the 18th of 2022. Their budget was presented before council and approved on September 6th, 2022. DDA is funded primarily through four A sales tax, interest earnings, lease income, and carryover funds from those same sources. DDA Board of Directors and staff recommend amendment to their budget to include a line item for property sales revenue and three expense lines relating to engineering and infrastructure cost. Tony Cal with DDA is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Cal?
Good evening, Council and Honorable Mayor. I'm passing around some exhibits. This is fairly simple. We've, we're having a lot of progress, especially in real estate. So I have a map of our foundation industrial park, which is located where Quickset is, behind Quickset, I call it. Those are four lots that we've either, we've sold one and the other three are under contract. So if everything, if everything proceeds, then we will generate from those sales and as part of the requested amendment, I want to add a line to property sales income and that would be $543,000. Expenses. In getting those lots properly done and some engineering, I've got a estimated cost of $75,000 in there. We're going to have to build an industrial access road just straight south of the floorstone building. Kind of shows up on that map. So that's what the $75,000 is, kind of oversee that and some other drainage issues that we may have. So moving on, the other map is the 8475 property, which we now refer to as the Texoma Technology Park. And we have a lot of interest in that. We've not moved forward on putting that water and sewer in there, even though we've had the plans done for several years. There wasn't that much activity on the site, so we're just kind of holding our funds until we thought the time was right. And I believe the time is right and we need to install that infrastructure and get ready for what's happening. So I've already got some bids. It actually came in today, but I've only put, I put a million and four in there for that sewer line, which is in the yellow. And we were going to wait on the water line, but I met with city manager and public works director, so we're looking at maybe upgrading that line. And so we may come back and decide to do the, go ahead and install that water line as well at the same time. That's, for that, I'll come back for another amendment. With that, I'd add, answer any questions?
Questions for Mr. Cal? We're certainly glad you're having to spend the money. That means that things are happening, right?
Correct. Thank you.
Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the amended Dennison Development Alliance Fiscal Year 2023 budget as presented. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item seven, project updates. Receive a report and hold a discussion regarding engineering division updates. Ms. Sterns.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk tonight about some changes that we've seen in the engineering division. We're actually part of the Public Works Administration Division, 93, and then some changes that we have coming. So I have this list. These are some things that we've been working on in the division. I wanted to note that the road closure permit, that's specifically for construction and utility work. So that's not any kind of special events. That permit is outside of our permit. So of that list, on this next slide, the things with a check mark are things that we already have in place and the boxes are things that we're currently working on. At our next council meeting, we will have an updated maintenance period for public improvements on the agenda for your consideration. Right now, our code calls for one year. The industry standard is actually two years. In all of our internal projects, we go for two years, so we're just changing that to make it consistent. We will also have a design guide at our next council meeting. The City of Dennison currently has a little bit of a design guide in our ordinance. This is actually going to be its own standalone document that we've developed along with planning and building. If someone wants to come in and develop in the City of Dennison, they'll be able to pick up this design guide, read through it, look at what's applicable to them on their project, as opposed to combing through all of our ordinances and trying to make sense of them. This is really straightforward conversational speak and it'll be really helpful. We're really excited. Any of our changes that we make, they're to meet a need, either for existing neighborhoods where development's going on, for developers or our builders. So it's kind of on us to communicate those changes and, and make these resources accessible for folks. So this is just a quick snapshot of the Public Works permits page on the city website. It kind of lists what you can expect when you go to apply for these different permits. We just want to be really transparent, give folks all the tools that they need to, to succeed here. And that's it.
Any questions for Ms. Sterns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work from Public Works. This was an information item only and requires no action by the council. Item seven B, receive a report, hold a discussion regarding downtown sidewalk ordinance updates. Ms. Dow.
So Mayor and Council, you may remember that about a year ago, you considered a sidewalk dining ordinance and that was the first part of this. If you think about it in two parts, part one and part two, and this part is to take it forward and to address the sidewalk, you know, the things that are placed on the sidewalk by each business. And... So the Main Street Advisory Board has approved this in November of 2022, the second part of this, and they will present it to council at a future meeting for adoption. And it's applicable to all Main Street and side streets. So it would be Chestnut, Woodard, Crawford in the downtown area, just to make it uniform is, is what we're proposing. The, these are the sections in the book. The outdoor dining, of course, is first, and then the street furniture and fixtures on the, of course, that's for dining. We have our own for the, the D3 project. We'll have other furniture and fixtures and that will be included in a future segment of this, this plan. The outdoor planner guidelines and then overall use of space. So the purpose of these is to provide meaningful standards for the overall use of sidewalks by businesses, including the use of outdoor dining areas throughout Dennison's historic overlay district. So basically, we want to give the business owners a guideline to purchase any furniture before they go out and spend money on it. And so we want to make good use of that. Absent an outdoor dining permit allowed in section one, any furniture and fixtures must be placed in the building entrance, the inset, or within 24 inches of the building. So there's separate guidelines for if they have sidewalk dining. And then this is, if they don't have sidewalk dining, anything must be within 24 inches of the building. All furniture and fixtures must be maintained in good visual appearance without fading, dents, tears, rust, corrosion, or chipped or peeling paint. So it's got to look good and represent our city well. Then the planners, there's a height level and then planners not being used as sidewalk dining. So again, sidewalk dining refers to the other section. If they're not used in that manner, then they must be within, again, 24 inches of the building and set, or with the building. All planners must have plants contained with them and they, if they die, they must be replaced. And then empty planners with only bare dirt, mulch, straw, wood chips are similar, similar or not permitted. So it's, it's taking some of that, you know, that detracts from the beauty of downtown away from this, the ability. And then the changes to the existing ordinance, I would say that the first one, you've got to leave a six-foot clear path, is included in the current ordinance. It's just not specified. So we're not changing anything there, we're just specifying it. The second one, the tables and chairs must, shall not be placed within four feet of an entrance or doorway. That was 10 feet, but we felt like it didn't give them enough room sometime to be able to do that. some time to be able to do that, so we wanted to change it to four feet. And then no advertising other than a sandwich board sign, and it must be in good and sturdy condition. So that's our proposes, proposal to change the, to update the sidewalk dining and the sidewalk usage ordinance. And we'll be back at a future council meeting to, to ask approval for that. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Dow? Well, I do. I have a question about when you, when you refer to people who, who do not have a dining permit, but they have other things, and, and it has to be with, be within 24 inches. You also referred to planters. Now, we have a broad definition of planters on our Main Street right now, up to and including bathtubs. And so is that, is that going to be controlled when, when our streetscape is complete?
Well, we're proposing that we just make it uniform across the board right now and, and try to make it as fair as possible. I'm not sure how we'll, I, I don't, I can't remember what is in the ordinance, but I can check for that to see how it's handled. But right now, we allow them, if they've got it within 18 inches, we pretty much don't control the things, especially if they bring them in and out every night. So that was what it was intended for, for the items on the sidewalk to be brought in every night. And it's not necessarily that.
Well, you can't bring in a clothed bathtub every night.
It would be a bit heavy.
If it's full of dirt and plants.
Yes.
Okay. Well, of course, I, I guess it'll come as a recommendation to council, but.
Right.
When the, when the sidewalks are rebuilt, all of that's going to be gone. So that would be the ideal time for us to not allow things like that to go back on the street.
Right. And I will examine that, take another look at it before it comes to you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. That was an information-only item and does not require action from the council. Item 7C, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding ICAC updates. Ms. Dow.
So as many of you know, we have the ICAC that is in process, and we have some signs that will be included in Phase 2. And this is a list of them up there. You can see the route that the ICAC takes. It is patterned after the parade when Eisenhower was here. And so we just kind of commemorate that parade route. And this is a, it's in process. It's a mural that will take us to and from the Eisenhower birthplace. And the art, it's already been prepped, so the Rotary Club cleaned it and primed it this weekend. And this coming week, on Thursday, the artists will be here to paint the mural and enhance that part. And that's the other side. This is, if you can see the red line there, that is the proposed sidewalk. We won't be able to do the entire sidewalk, of course. Part of it goes across the railroad tracks, and then it goes down Crockett and then across into the birthplace. We also won't be doing the birthplace portion. That will be with their improvements. We are going to look at addressing the, that Y there in the middle. So with that, we're going to need to do some design on this. That's a 12% grade, which is more than is allowed by ADA. And so we, Ronnie and Irvin and Fantion and Public Works and I were on a call the other day and listened to some options that we have. They came up with some options. So as you can also see, there are barriers on both sides and not necessarily enough room for a sidewalk. You've got electric poles going down the street on both sides. And so there's, there's just some obstacles there that don't make it easy to just pour a sidewalk, including the grade. And so they're going to have a design done for that, and that will take a portion of the funds that have been allocated for that this year. And then they will use the remaining portion for construction as soon as the design's done. And then, let's see. Okay, I'm sorry, that's the next one. So as, as soon as the design's done, we will see some construction, but that will begin as immediately as, as they can get the engineer involved.
Questions from council?
Yes, I do. The sidewalk along South Crockett, the incline it shows, that's farther east than the home. So I guess my question is, why are we taking the sidewalk that far east when the birthplace actually is kind of southwest of where this street is? It would, to me, have made more sense to go down Houston under the overpass and then straight shot, I don't know what the name of that avenue is, to the birthplace. But I'm just curious as to why it goes all the way to Crockett.
Right.
Yeah, right through there.
Right.
And maybe that doesn't meet any ADA requirements either, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's a real narrow sidewalk. I would say it's about this, this wide. And if you'll, that truck is, now it's on the other side. That truck is, okay, now if you look right along the right edge of that, it's broken up. There's really not enough room to just step across it, you know, without a wheelchair or, or any ADA accessibility. So, one, we decided that it was more of a challenge to go that way. But the, let's see, the path that Eisenhower actually took for the parade, we were trying to follow that as much as possible and to get people, you know, across the railroad tracks and then down. So that was just the chosen path that, that we had during the process. So there are two ways to get there.
In addition, J.C., the, the capital improvement program for the birthplace is rerouting the entrance to the birthplace, which is coming off of Crockett.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's, that's the reason, the other reason. And so, any other questions from council?
Mayor, I was just going to comment on the mural that Rotary's putting in. As a Rotarian, Robert Crowley, Dr. Courtwright, all Rotarians involved in the local club, it was pretty cool to see the project, progress that was made down there this weekend. And Mr. Massey, who's sitting in the audience tonight, was one of the spearheads on organizing the whole effort. And it was a lot of effort, and it's a lot bigger scale than what we realized. I can promise you that in my ninth hour on the, on the forklift, power washing, I was like, wow, this is a lot bigger. And Charlie Poole, who was also sitting in the audience, was a huge player in that, both fellow Rotarians. So it was an honor to get to participate. I'm really excited to see that finished product. It's, it's coming together. So just wanted to note that.
Well, we're very grateful to the, to the Rotary for, for their adoption of this, of Phase 2, because it will announce that you're entering the area where the birthplace is, and that's going to mean so much to the community and to those visitors who will come because of Eisenhower. So I, I know it was a, a long couple of days. I saw the posts on Facebook, but we appreciate all the work that, that you did to, to get that ready to receive such a beautiful mural.
Is the artist, is it Arce?
Mm-hmm.
Institute? So he did the TV Munson and the Eisenhower in the very half. So it'll be, it's going to look just like those pictures.
I think he started on the ninth, is that right?
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, which is exciting. So I don't know how many days. It's a lot of cans of spray paint, I can tell you that much.
It won't take him long.
There's a lot of concrete out there. And we, we generated, just to, Mayor, just to let you know, there were several ideas about other improvements to that corridor that kind of came to light when we were out there working, once you're on the ground. And so I think there's some additional landscaping, trimming, you know, that we can continue to do. Hopefully, that can be a continuation project, of course.
All right. No further questions for Ms. Dow? That was an information item only and does not require action from the council. Item 7D, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding historic preservation ordinance updates. Ms. Dow.
Well, we have done several things to try to get the word out to property owners about the historic district and working with other departments. We updated our website. The mayor did a video with a couple of property owners that we put on there. Deed restrictions are now required to be recorded for property in the historic district. We have looked at strict reinforcement, utilizing a historic preservation consultant as well, and rewriting the ordinance. So Assistant City Manager Rene Wagner and I have, have been working on that, and I'll tell you more about that in the next slide. We plan also to update the design guidelines that accompany this. It's like the ordinance and then the design guidelines that have been approved by council before. And then Water Department is providing us information when tenants come and go, so we can try to reach those people as soon as possible before they make changes. And then the permitting process is being reviewed to ensure that the cases receive HP approval. And I'm sorry, I just didn't click on that, but that, I read that. So what we've done in changing the ordinance, we're looking at an expiration date, because right now it doesn't have one, and so we want to add that. We've tightened some wording. We've also defined and outlined how to proceed with emergency repairs. And so, Mayor, you were part of that discussion in the past. Add definition of the HPB, how many board members and, and things like that. So we just, you know, took care of some administrative things like that. Unpainted brick should remain unpainted. The change to mason, we changed the word brick to masonry to be more inclusive. We're also looking at inspection of the work after it's done to ensure that it was according to their certificate of occupant, certificate of appropriateness, I'm sorry. And then we define who enforces it. So going forward, the proposed ordinance changes will be reviewed by a committee of staff members and, and others, and brought back to council to consider for adoption. We're planning to do that by the, the second meeting in April. And so we want to give the staff members, you know, we've got it edited pretty well and need to make those changes, and then give the staff members time to look over it before we come together at a meeting. So that's the plan.
Questions for Ms. Dow?
I think the biggest thing we'll, we'll have to do is once we get it approved, is make it easily accessible, easy to digest, so that people can, we can get that word out and get that information out there. I think it'll make the difference. If you want them to do the right thing, it's got to be the, the more easy thing, at least not the difficult, difficult.
Right.
And part of that's on us, too, that we can help get that out there.
And, you know, like I said, with the website, some of that has, has been done. But I plan to send out a letter to all the property owners after we get this completed and let them know, you know, what, where it is and where they can find it. We've had a lot of changes in property owners.
Oh, yeah.
Any further comments from council? Thank you. I know this has been a lot of hard work, and it's been a long time coming, but, but it's going to benefit us in the long run. So that was an information item only and does not require action by the council. Item 8, pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda items as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Confere with city attorney, Section 551.071. Confere with city attorney regarding 321 West Main. Confere with city attorney regarding 317 West Main. Confere with city attorney regarding 2824 West Crawford and 1527 South Austin Avenue. Confere with city attorney regarding Trails at Waterloo Lake Park. Confere with city attorney regarding encroachment agreements and associated fees. Discuss the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or sell value of real estate. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Section 551.072, Trails at Waterloo Lake Park. The time is 6:46, and the council is now in executive session.